The Monday, September 8th, 2025, regular meeting of the Paris City Council is hereby called to order at 5:30 PM. For the purpose of this meeting, there's a quorum of the council president. Agenda item number two, invocation. Mr. Gene Anderson will deliver the invocation and the United States pledge and Texas pledge will be led by the city council. Please stand.
May we pray. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for all the blessings that you bestow upon us, Father, here in our city, in our state, in our country. We pray for your guidance tonight as we conduct the city's business and we pray that everything that we do say and even think would be to your glory and honor. For we pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Before we move on to the citizens forum, we do have a brief announcement for some of the events that are going on in our community.
Before we move on to the citizens forum, we do have a brief announcement for some of the events that are going on in our community.
An evening of music, dancing, and family-friendly fun returns to downtown Paris from 6:00 to 10:00 PM on Saturday, September 20th. Salsa on the Square spotlights Latino culture, music, dance, and food. Free dance lessons are available and let your taste buds dance as local Mexican restaurants compete for the best salsa title. Salsa on the Square in downtown Paris, 6:00 to 10:00, Saturday, September 20th.
That looks like a lot of fun. All right, so don't miss it. It's gonna be a great event. All right, we'll move on to our citizens forum. Persons desiring to address the council must limit their presentation no more than two minutes. Unless an item is posted on the agenda, the Texas Open Meetings Act prohibits the council from responding to any comments other than to refer to the matter to a future agenda, to an existing policy, or to a staffers with specific factual information. Claims against the city council, the city, the council members, or employees, as well as individual personal appeals, are not appropriate for the citizens forum. If necessary, the city council may convene in the executive session under Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code regarding any item on this agenda. The public forum is now open. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public forum. Have a little bit more salsa there. Okay, we will now move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are approved by a single action of the council, with such approval applicable to all items appearing on the consent agenda. A council member may request any item to be removed from the consent agenda and considered as a separate item. Does any member wish to remove an item off the agenda? If not, I'll go ahead and hear a motion. We've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to agenda item number seven. This will start with our regular agenda. Conduct a public hearing on the city's proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2025-2026. Mr. Gene Anderson?
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. A public hearing on the proposed city tax rates required under Chapter 26 of the Texas Tax Code. The proposed tax rate was discussed by the city council at its August 11th council meeting. The council will need to conduct a public hearing on the rate tonight. A legal notice of the public hearing has been published in the Paris News. A copy of the proposed tax rate can be found on the city website.
Okay, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask for anyone wishing to speak about this item. Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. This is not an item that we have to take any action on this evening. So we will move on to the next agenda item. Agenda item number eight. Conduct a public hearing on the city manager's proposed budget for the fiscal year of 2025-2026. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. A public hearing on the proposed city budget is required by Sections 48 of the City Charter and Section 102.006 of the Local Government Code. The budget was filed with the city clerk on July the 28th. A legal notice advertising the public hearing was published in the Paris News and a copy of the proposed budget was placed on the city website. The city council needs to conduct a public hearing tonight on that budget.
Thank you, sir. I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask for anyone to wish to speak about this item. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. The public hearing is now open. Seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Again, this is an item that no action needs to be taken tonight, so we will move on to agenda item number nine. Discuss an act on an ordinance adopting a budget for the ensuing fiscal period beginning October 1st, 2025 and ending September 30th, 2026. Mr. Anderson?
Okay. Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council. The proposed city budget for 25-26 was filed with the city clerk on July the 28th and presented to the council on August the 11th. The budget ordinance that's attached to the agenda memo that you have before you summarizes all of the revenues and expenses for all the city budgeted city funds and departments. It also provides for certain transfers from the Water and Sewer Fund to the related INS funds for that. The proposed council, or the proposed budget was received by the city council. Public hearing was held in accordance to the city charter requirements, which we just did. And the proposed budget now awaits the city council's formal adoption through this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, is there any discussion, any questions we have? And if not, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Make motion. We got a motion from Mr. Ellis.
Second.
Second from Ms. Putnam. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries five zero. Agenda item number 10. Discuss an act on a resolution approving an economic development and residential tax abatement agreement under 505 Housing Infill Development Program as requested by Palma Holdings LLC to build single-family dwellings up to a total of 10 separate units. Mr. Almomenza?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. So this is the regular 505 program. And the applicant that is Palma Holding LLC has applied for this economic development and residential tax abatement agreement under the 505 Housing Infill Development Program to build single-family dwelling up to 10 separate units. These names and location of the reinvestment zone, that is 2025-1, is encompassing the entirety of the corporate limits of the city of Paris, Texas. And these properties include El Card Number 16775, El Card Number 10184, El Card Number 14306, which is within the tourist zone with address 33 First Street Northeast. El Card Number 14327, El Card Number 14461, El Card Number 22009, El Card Number 19095, El Card Number 20488, El Card Number 15109, and El Card Number 15311. The status of this issue is that staff has reviewed the application and determined that these properties are within the program area and that the proposed improvement meet the criteria for the program. The proposed agreement attached here to provides incentive under the Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code relating to the labor fees on water and seawater taps. Also, the building plan review and permitting, as well as residential tax abatement under the authority of the Texas Code, Chapter 312. All incentives are provided in the program guidelines and criteria. Notice of the council's consideration of the tax abatement was duly posted at least 30 days prior to this meeting as required by law. For the budget, the estimated cost of the nature of improvement or repairs will be between 1.5 million and 1.9 million. And so staff recommends an adoption of a resolution approving the attached 505 agreement with Palma Holding LLC. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, is there any discussion, any questions that we may have at this time?
Is there any other, because one is in a tourist zone, do we notify the tourist board about that, or how, how's that handled?
And in order to be effective, the agreement will also have to be approved by the tourist board. That's a requirement of the Texas Tax Code, so that will go to them at their meeting on Thursday. It is a single parcel in 10, so I don't anticipate an issue there.
On the 11th.
Okay, thank you.
So with that question, if we approve and the tourist board turns it down, then it's rejected?
Both have to approve it. If it's in the, if it's in the tourist zone.
Really?
Should they, should they go first and then it come back to council?
There's nothing in the statute that determines order.
Okay, just curious.
Ideally, we would do it first, but that did not happen on this one, so we'll get it done on Thursday.
Since both have to approve, it didn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
But it's just, it's just kind of surprising that if we approve it, then the tourist boards can turn it down.
Well, I think the thinking is it's unlikely to ever happen on little parcels here and there, and there are very few parcels in the program area that are also in a tourist zone. It's unlikely that those would ever be turned down. But the idea is that if we wanted to say there's a big industrial tax abatement that would take out of the tourist and would really reduce the value of possible revenues into the tourist, and the tourist board has a say in that.
I got a question regarding just procedural for that, for the tourist. I know the tourist is appointed by the council, but let's just say theoretically speaking, if they were to deny it, wouldn't council have the final say so on that?
What the statute says is that for a tax abatement in a tourist zone, to be effective, that the tourist board has to approve it.
Okay, I got you. Just wanted to get a good understanding, not that we don't trust them or anything like that. We appoint them, so clearly we trust them, but we just wanted to make sure. It was our first tourist, so. These are good questions to ask, though. On a personal note, I think this is a great development. We have discussed 505, two great links this council has, and I think that it's for a good reason. And we're excited that folks would want to continue to invest in this program and we're pretty pumped about that.
And I would say that if the, on this one, that if the tourist board said no for some reason, and again, I don't anticipate that happening, it could still go forward as to the other nine parcels. They don't have veto power on any property that's not within the zone.
Do we have an inventory of lots of how many have been sold so far, or?
Yes, we have, we do.
And what is that number?
We, I don't have it with me right now, but I can get it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions or any comments?
Good to see the single-family housing. You know, I hear lately a lot of single-family dwellings are being approved, so thank goodness for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, fantastic. Well, if there are no other further discussion or any comments or questions, I'll entertain the floor for a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve this economic development agreement.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, sir. Agenda item number 11. Receive a presentation from Celso Arieta about the IT department.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Council, thank you for this opportunity. I'm just waiting for my keyboard and my mouse to start showing my presentation.
These electronic tick guys, they walk up with no paper at all.
No, he's coming. Thank you. Well, be nice with me, don't ask too many questions. I appreciate this time to show all the progress we are, we are having on city of Paris IT department. And as you know, we are only three person in IT, but we are highly skilled and efficient, no? I know if you know Michael Gott, I bet you know Michael Gott, he's worked here for maybe 22 years, and Brian Dabs. And I'm serving as IT manager since June 2022. And when I started working here, my first focus was modernization and security and operation efficiency. Now, bring the most technology available for the city and also collaboration driving and giving results to support all the departments. One of the first projects we deploy in City of Paris, and maybe you remember this diagram here, no? Was the SD1 implementation with the smart diagram here, no, was the SD one implementation with the smart connectivity for all around the facilities for our buildings and officers. Before was point-to-point and was really difficult to give solutions, because first, nobody on my team is a climber, so we have to climb towers. So that's why I choose SD one with internet connectivity. And with, with this solution, we centralized all the management across the city facilities, so we can get remote access with the Cisco Meraki platform remotely, wherever I am, no, any part of the world. If I am Hawaii on vacation, I can also have login, and I'm not the only one with access. Also, Michael and Brian have access to this platform in case I'm out of the city, no? Also, we deployed next generation firewalls across the city to improve better security for all the environment around the city. This is the way we are right now, no? You can see now, obviously, I removed some information because it's a sensitive information like IP address and everything, but now you can see a better segmentation here for different facilities, and we have different IP address. Maybe you don't understand about the IP address, but we reduce the noise of the network and we split the traffic, no? So basically, we build a really, a huge highway to segment all the traffic with this implementation. Another migration was the UCAS, Uniform Communication as a Service Platform. So basically, we removed all the legacy PBX for the telephone system with cloud platform based, no? With this one, we engaged internal and external collaboration, lower maintenance cost, and with this platform, we can give better results. It's easy to manage, no, it's simple. Anybody on my team can handle this solution. You don't have to have a really good skills to give support for our customers. With, with this also solution, we are ready in case we need to grow or in case something's happened, I can deploy any number of extensions in maybe two hours. So it's, it's easy. Another project was the smart water treatment with IoT. IoT means Internet of Things, no? And we deployed this one because, like I mentioned before, was all the connectivity with all the network was point-to-point with multiple repeaters between each facility or each, each device. So, and was seriously, was really painful to give support, and we lost a lot of time just to keep the communication active, no? With this one, like you see in this picture, for example, you can see all the devices are in green except one. Obviously, this one is EMS out because we decompose, decompose in this office because we don't need it anymore. So that's why I said this one like an example. And we can track here, and we can be more proactive because we can receive alerts. And also, actually, for example, before I made the change, every weekend in the middle of the night, I get phone calls from water treatment plant, and maybe Danny remember that, no? He called me Ronnie, and now I need to talk with them to see, hey, everything's okay because they, they don't call me anymore. Yeah. Another, another goal and challenge we deploy here in City of Paris, before, all the servers for the infrastructure, virtual and physical service was Windows Operation Server twenty twelve, and that service was out of the support from Microsoft in October, two years ago, almost. So Michael was leading this project, and he deployed Windows twenty nineteen in maybe six months. Was really hard, hard work, and Michael was aware of this responsibility. Also, another, another challenge was the exchange email solutions, no? And maybe nobody remembered about this issue, but every day I receive phone calls, no? Hey, my mailbox is full, no? And the only recommendation we can provide to the user is please clean your mailbox, no? Because we don't have enough storage in our on-premise infrastructure. So right now, we have Microsoft three sixty-five with a hundred gigabytes per mailbox and also fifty gigabytes, that is the pending license we assign to the users. Also, with this, with this change, we also get all the Microsoft three sixty-five suite, no, like Teams, OneDrive, SharePoint, Collaboration, Power BI. Obviously, we still are learning how we can use all these collaboration tools, but we are on this, on this track, no? Another, another challenge I get with the last administration with Grayson was start saving with the, the potlines with AT&amp;T. This, this is just an example for the potlines, the analog lines. We have five thousand monthly expense with a waste of potlines because we'd never use that potline, no? So we reduce around three thousand dollars, and just, we have like a two thousand monthly saving. Maybe it's not too much, but end of the year, it's twenty-four thousand dollars where we can use for another, another solution. Plus, the IoT implementation with the T-Mobile, no, with the connect, five G connectivity, so we can add another two hundred and thirty-seven, two hundred and thirty hundred dollars plus, no? Another project we, we, we launched, the, was the, the training for, we know before, and this project was led by, by Brian because he's the network and security supervisor. So I let my, Brian, please implement this solution, and he's doing perfectly fine, no? Like you see, unfortunately, I don't have the, the first chart here when we start, but we was really close to the red area, where basically our infrastructure to email was a lot of risk, and we already reduced in only six months to the green, to the yellow area. So our goal is reach this green area. And also, for example, when the phishing security test in the last six months, you can see the charts here, no? For example, before, all the users open the mail, click on the link, or capture the data. Right now, we can barely receive any, with the users capture the data, no? When I say capture the data, it's when the user capture their credentials. Actually, the last two weeks, we had some issue with that, no? But this is another, another subject we can talk later. And now, well, my responsibility is ensuring the continuity and availability with better, with improved uptime and critical services, a stronger communication infrastructure, and we are ready in case the city needs to grow, or city needs for the future. So basically, the, the infrastructure we already have, it's almost ready, no, for any needs we, we, we need. And what next for the IT department in City of Paris? Disaster recovery plan and continuity plan. We already have the disaster recovery plan for the City of Paris environment, just for the city, but we don't have something like that, like that robust for the, the police department. So with the next year, we're going to start with that implementation where we can have multiple servers as a backup, not just in, in PD, also in annex data center. So in case we receive a catastrophe, disaster, or hurricane or something, we can make the disaster recovery plan in another environment. Another challenge is the automation and cell service solution, and this one is, my, my plan is, they start the implementation with the three-one-one platform. This is another presentation I have in the future with, with y'all, where now the, the employees and the citizens can be more efficient because we can track better data for all the tickets we had on around the city, no? Also, another deeper cross-the-parliamentary integration using the Microsoft Power Platform because we already have that tools, so we have to use it. So that's why I, I mentioned, we are ready for the next city needs. And well, the, I just really appreciate all the leadership I have, no? And also the team support, because without them, all this progress, it wouldn't possible without them, and obviously, the, the leadership with, with you and the team. And my compromise with the city is keep innovation and provide excellent services, and that's all I have. So if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to.
Anyone have any questions?
What could I ask?
Thank you. I was kidding, you can, you can ask.
Well, you, you guys do a great job, and we, we always appreciate the, the great attitude you guys have, because I know we get cyber attacks all the time, and it's, it's hard. Every city gets it. It's a difficult matter, but you guys are really putting in that work, and we really appreciate your entire department and putting in that, those efforts. And I think oftentimes, citizens don't get a chance to see or understand all the things that you guys are doing behind the curtain.
Right.
And that's the hard part, but just to see the infrastructure and where you guys have come from that SD WAN.
Yeah.
And all these different implementations and these tools that you guys have provided, it's helped to provide better connectivity and better communication between departments.
Yes.
And I think that has been the biggest thing that you guys have improved on within the last three, four years, and that's huge.
Yeah, and also, for example, when I started working here with the, the SCADA system, no? When I start understand how critical is that system, so that's why our main focus was keep the connectivity for that platform because we provide water for the city.
Yes.
No, so that's why it's really critical, and obviously, the rest of the services, but.
I, one thing that's always baffled me that I, I've, I've had a hard time understanding or wrapping my mind around is seeing that the, the, you know, water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, they're so far away. And so the, the, the communication between, you know, the hub, the brain here, and then another appendage way out there, that's always baffled me of like, man, you guys have to stay on top of all of the, you know, real-time data.
Yes.
And make sure that if you have any downtime or any lag, it's got to be addressed ASAP.
Exactly.
And so it's, it's amazing. I don't know how y'all do it.
And right now, the downtime, it's minimum, seriously, especially with the wastewater water treatment, because what, like you mentioned, was far away to implement the fiber optic for water treatment, no? And the connectivity we have in wastewater, so we can barely lose connectivity in that place. We lost when we, we have a power issue, but not for the communication.
You know, what, what y'all have done with the wastewater, just with the wastewater, it helps to manage time, because, you know, you were talking about some of the issues that really weren't issues, but it showed up like alarms or alerts, and, you know, so that's a savings right there when you manage time better because you shore up the things that really are not alerts, and you don't have to spend a lot of time trying to investigate and see what's going on when really nothing, it's not a problem at all.
Yeah, but basically, right now, it's just like a plug and play.
Right.
So it's easy to get the troubleshooting.
Yeah, troubleshooting, that's the word.
I had one question regarding that three-one-one system. How, how quickly do you think we would be able to see that in action with, let's just say, if citizens out on the, out on the road in front of their home, they say, oh, man, there's a, there's a pothole, or, hey, we have a leak on our end.
Yeah.
Over here and on this side of the town, or whatever. You know, they're able to take a picture, send it in to three-one-one, and then it comes. How, how quickly do you think that is going to be operational?
Well, I, I wasn't prepared for that, but my, my first idea, no, with this platform, it's just provide a friendly solution for the citizens and employees. Now, for example, you can have an app where you can take a picture, like you say, like put, like put on the street, no? You can take a picture, open your ticket, no, and you can, you can have three different to use the app, with your user credential, like assigning, just like a guest, or just I want to open a ticket. Also, for example, you, you're going to be able to see all the tickets, it's going to be already there, so maybe you, you don't have to waste your time, because somebody opened that ticket that you say, okay, it's here. According to your location, it's going to be, you can have that visibility with this platform. And it's going to be web-based, and obviously, with iOS, any operation system with any device.
I, I really like that, and I'll be honest with you, this has been something that we have been dying for as citizens, right? Because we on council end up getting so many calls on repeated issues that we've already known, and we've had, you know, a couple of citizens already reach out, but then it's like, all right, now we have a solution that empowers citizens to be able to report it and have better communication, say, hey, this is going to be taken care of.
And also for us, no, because we can have the data available. So we, we can justify, we need more personnel, we need more money, no? It's going to be there, all the data.
And the RFP was opened last week.
Yes.
What day was that? Tuesday, Wednesday?
Sorry?
The RFP, what day did we open RFPs for that project?
Yes, actually, we received only one proposal.
Yeah.
No, but they comply with everything we, I request on my RFP.
I don't, was that Wednesday?
Yes.
Thursday? Wednesday, I think it was. So just so you know, that's, we are in the process. So we did receive one RFP. The RFP was within the budget, so we will have that on the next agenda to be approved by you all, and then once that gets going, I mean, we can get started.
According to roadmap, the first implementation is going to be eight months to be able to see something, no? After the eight month, the nine, the month nine, now we can see like an implementation by departments.
Got you.
Yeah.
That's, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can market that and be able to get a lot more information out to our citizens as that timeframe comes out and as the build-out goes forward, but this is going to be a neat opportunity for our citizens to be able to interact with the issues in real time, so.
So, so will that ticket, I mean, will that app also give a citizen information as far as the status of a particular?
Actually, we, my plan also is provide updates for the user. For example, if you open a ticket, no, obviously, okay, you, thank you for your, your ticket, no? And once the ticket is assigned to somebody, okay, your ticket that's already assigned to Celso Arreta, no, your ATI to, to solution, it's going to be maybe two hours, three hours, depend our service level agreement for, for each department. Yeah, we, we want to provide the status for your ticket.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
I was kidding, you can ask.
Well, yes, in our strategic planning, the consultant has just said, how can we make ourselves more customer-friendly?
Yes, exactly.
And always thinking about our citizens as customers, and the first place it starts is making our IT, you know, stay at the yard and more that we can do on our phone, that's the best, so.
Yeah. And also for internal staff, no? When I was working with, getting all the requirements with Nikki, no, in code enforcement, seriously, she'd have to move to any different platforms, no? So it's, it's difficult, so.
Well, fantastic. Well, thank you, thank you guys so much. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number twelve, receive a presentation from Jason Dies about the EMS department.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, never follow the IT guy with a computer presentation. Those are some awesome slides.
Yeah.
I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to talk today about the EMS department. The mission of our EMS department is pretty simple, that's to serve, to strive, and to never yield. We try to accomplish that mission every day by following this set of values, which is service, integrity, compassion, accountability, and excellence. There are a lot of different EMS models in the country, and this is due to the unique needs of the different communities and what they had in place at the time whenever they began EMS service. What we have here in the city is what's called a municipal third service system. That means that it's a third public safety department within the city, separate from the police department and the fire department. There are advantages and disadvantages to all of these different types of service models, but a couple of advantages that we have here, I think, is that we're government, so that's good for our employees, it's nice and stable, but we also just have a singular focus of taking care of patients and treating sick and injured citizens. The City of Paris began EMS operations in nineteen seventy-nine, and initially, they did that, we did that with two ambulances, and they were staffed with one EMT and one driver, and the driver at that point in time may have been a certified person or not a certified person. Today, we've grown to staff four ambulances, twenty-four hours for nine-one-one response, and one ambulance that is staffed for peak hours. That ambulance is currently staffed from ten AM to six PM, with plans to extend those hours as needed Monday through Friday. We have a contract with Lamar County to provide EMS services outside the city limits, so with that, we cover nine hundred and thirty-four square miles, we serve over fifty thousand residents, and we are on pace this year for about nine thousand seven hundred requests for service. We maintain a fleet of eight, of eight ambulances, and each one of those has over three hundred individual items on them that have to be checked every day, and that's everything from the smallest bottle of medication to large cardiac monitoring equipment. We replace one ambulance each year, which gives us a life cycle of about eight years, and when we trade those ambulances in, they typically have two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand miles on them, so we get every bit of use and then some out of these ambulances. We have one support vehicle, which is a Tahoe that our deputy chief operates out of while managing the shift, and then we work out of four stations, three of those being EMS-only stations, and one being a shared facility with Paris Fire Department Station Four. The EMS department is responsible for responding to any and all requests for medical and trauma services. This includes anything from chest pain or shortness of breath to vehicle accidents, industrial accidents, or childbirth calls. Once on scene, our medics assess, stabilize, and provide treatment to the patients, and then continue that treatment while transporting to the hospital. The EMS department also handles some inter-facility transports when patients need a higher level of care, and then we provide some medical standby services and do a lot of public education. So when I was preparing for this presentation, I was going back year by year to look at call volume, and of course, the number was getting smaller every year because we have more calls every year, but when I got to twenty twenty, something strange happened. I don't know if you guys remember that or not, but the call volume went way through the roof, and I remembered COVID. So in order to not skew kind of any numbers, I just jumped back one more year at twenty nineteen for a five-year look, and then back to twenty fourteen for another five-year look. So twenty fourteen, we had eight thousand two hundred and twenty calls for service, and in twenty nineteen, we were up to almost ninety-four hundred calls for service, and then now, our last complete year in twenty And then now, our last complete year in twenty twenty-four was nine thousand six hundred and fifty-five calls for service, which is an average of about twenty-six point four five calls per day. And, um, just kind of for reference, the big number that I saw in COVID was ninety-seven hundred. So we're back to COVID numbers now, just with our normal operations. That's the kind of growth that we've seen. Seventeen point five percent increase in call volume over those ten years. So there are about thirty-five categories that calls can kind of fall into at dispatch. Um, depending on what the chief complaint of the caller is, this is just kind of an example of our most frequent call types. Most frequent call type is sick person at nine, uh, nineteen hundred and thirty-two calls. And that's because a lot of vague complaints will fall into that category. And then that's followed by breathing problems calls, falls problem, fall calls, and chest pain calls. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, our medics administered almost three thousand doses of medication. They delivered oxygen to over eighteen hundred patients, they established over four thousand IVs, and they performed over eight thousand one hundred ALS assessments and captured over five thousand EKGs. So we measure a lot of things in healthcare and we do that so that we can see how we're performing and then may hopefully make improvements to that. But there are a lot of things that happen kind of every day in healthcare that you really can't measure. So those things are like, every day, our medics are just listening to people. Um, and sometimes that's all somebody needs, somebody to talk to and know that somebody's listening to their situation. Um, our medics often make contact with people on the worst day of their life. Um, they don't know what to do, they're terrified. Our medics do a good job of stepping into those situations and bringing calm, that's a big part of the job. Um, also, our medics are called upon to give terrible news a lot of times and, uh, it's not an easy task and we do it too often. Um, often enough that our medics ask for some specific training on how to deliver that news in ways that was the least harmful to family members and also the least harmful to themselves. So that brings us to our people. The things on the slide previous with all the treatments, we can teach all of those things. Um, they teach those in paramedic school, but the, the things on the previous slide that people do because they care and our people care. We have twenty-seven full-time paramedic positions and currently two of those are unfilled. Um, our paramedics, our full-time folks work a twenty-four hours on, forty-eight hours off shift. So a normal work year for a, a person is about two thousand and eighty hours. Our medics will work, uh, an additional eight hundred and thirty-two hours, um, for a total of twenty-nine hundred and twelve hours per year. So they work a lot of hours and that's just their normal schedule. That doesn't include any time they work outside of their normal schedule. Uh, we have about twenty to twenty-five PRN EMTs and paramedics that work on an as-needed or a flex type of basis. We have one billing assistant slash, or billing liaison slash admin assistant, and she works with our crews and our billing company to make sure that all of our, all of our reimbursement tasks are taken care of. Our paramedics are highly trained, highly skilled. Uh, to become a paramedic, it takes about twelve to eighteen hundred hours of education. This includes classroom education, lab education, and, uh, field internships. And usually takes about a year to year and a half to complete, depending on, um, what program you're attending. Once they pass the course, they then have to sit for the national registry exam, which has about a, uh, sixty-four percent first time pass rate in the state of Texas. It's a very difficult exam. Uh, once, uh, they have their paramedic certification, we require that they maintain certification in basic life support, advanced cardiac life support, and pediatric advanced life support. So this is one place kind of where the EMS department differs a little bit from other public safety departments in the city. Uh, the police department, fire department being civil service, they kind of have the option, if they need to, to hire uncertified people. They'll, the city will then, uh, pay for them to train and certify, um, and, and then go to work. So our candidates have to have all of this training, they invest in it upfront, um, before they can even apply. So that does save the city the money of having to train people, but it also makes our applicant pool quite a bit smaller. Um, to keep their paramedic certification requires about sixty hours of education every two years. And then we have several folks who are getting critical care and flight paramedic certified, and that allows them to take care of our most critical patients. The EMS department's on duty twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It's a very difficult job. Uh, the thirty-six men and fifteen women that work for the EMS department, they work in all weather conditions, all hours of the day and night, and in all types of environments. Uh, and the work that they do takes an extreme emotional and physical toll to the fact that, uh, an average career for a paramedic in the United States is about six and a half years. For a long time, the EMS industry as a whole didn't do a very good job of taking care of our people. Um, we lost a lot of people because of that. Uh, but luckily, in the last five to ten years, EMS has kind of led the charge in, in the, uh, implementation of peer support teams. And, uh, here at the City of the Parish, we've done the same thing. We have about six to eight paramedics who have received specialized training in how to build a peer support team, how to listen to their peers, how to understand their peers, validate what's going on, um, and then also connect them with services if they need to. Our folks are a lot more likely to talk to someone who's been there before than, than someone who hasn't. So I'm very proud of that program and this year so far, we've had twenty contacts, meaning twenty times someone has reached out for peer, to peer support, uh, to talk about something, or, uh, peer support has reached out to them. We have very dedicated people, they're local, they're our neighbors, um, and they're extremely committed. Not to just that work that they do on the ambulance, but outside of that as well. Just a few pictures I want to point out here, the bottom left is a couple of our guys, Roger and Patrick at Fill the Boot. We do this every year, it's a campaign that we started back in the nineteen nineties where we stand outside Walmart, and if you've driven through there, we've begged for money from you. But we use that money to collect, uh, or to buy toys or needed items for underprivileged children in Lamar County. Next to that is one of our paramedics, Adrian, uh, and his wife, um, Lindy. And they are participating in steak wars, Paris EMS has a team in that every year, and we usually finish around the top three. I don't want to jinx this, but we've gotten close, we hadn't, hadn't won the gold yet, but we're working on it. Uh, in the top right there, that's one of our paramedics, Alan Garcia. Alan is a fairly new father and, uh, he has really stepped into teaching kids for us. Uh, this is probably, uh, one of our KidSafe Saturday events, another event that we've hosted for years and years where we, uh, provide safety messages to children along with the police department, fire department, and local businesses participate as well. Bottom right picture there is probably my most favorite, that's, um, Trooper Holt in the light blue shirt. Trooper Holt was a DPS trooper who was attending training at Camp Maxi, uh, whenever he suffered a sudden cardiac arrest. Uh, his fellow troopers performed CPR until EMS arrived. Our crews arrived and found him to still be in cardiac arrest. They were able to successfully resuscitate him. Uh, they placed him what, in what you might call like a medically induced coma, uh, placed a breathing tube in his, in his lungs and put him on a ventilator. Uh, they then interpreted his EKG and found that, uh, the cause of his cardiac arrest was a severe heart attack. They were able to call the head to the hospital and let them know to have the catheter team on ready. Um, they followed him through the cath lab and Trooper Holt survived and made a full recovery, and that's him helping present the CPR save coins to the crew that saved him. And mind you all, this was done out at Camp Maxi, on the side of the road at, in the dark. So, uh, extremely difficult situation that our people work in. So, uh, a couple of weeks ago, Chief McMonigal talked to you guys about some of the struggles that the fire department's currently having. The EMS department is seeing many of those same struggles. Uh, the primary concern for us right now is our ability to recruit and retain employees. In, the EMS department's lost four full-time employees since the first of the year. And when you adjust for the total number of full-time employees in each department, we're nearing the same, um, overturn rate as, as the fire department is. Um, in fact, we have, uh, several PRN, uh, employees that work for us that have recently completed paramedic training who have turned down full-time positions. Um, because remember, they've already invested all that time and money upfront and they just really feel like it's not a good investment or return on their investment right now. Uh, and I think that's, you know, directly related to our compensation. Chief McMonigal explained the compensation of our firefighters and paramedics a couple of weeks ago to you guys. Um, I know that that's a concern to all of you. Um, I know it's a concern not just with the EMS department, fire department, but all the city. I also know that Mr. Beverly's working on a, a pay study to kind of try to get that figured out, and it's gonna take a little bit of time um, and some funding to implement. But I do have to tell you that our paramedics can travel across the county line in any direction and likely make more money and, uh, work less hours. On top of that, EMS, uh, services are not our only competition. Uh, paramedics are hired to work in emergency rooms, hospitals, freestanding EDs, and also in private industry. Two of the positions that we lost were to private industry paramedic safety jobs. Um, also, fire departments, especially in the metroplex, that operate EMS services are actively recruiting paramedics because it's a less expensive and less time-consuming option for them to hire a paramedic and send them to a fire academy than it is to hire a firefighter and send them to paramedic school. Another struggle that we're currently facing is our staffing model. The EMS department's budgeted for nine full-time positions and our minimum staffing each day, or nine full-time positions per day. And our minimum staffing for the day is nine. So if any, there's no flex there. If anyone is out with a vacation day or holiday, then we have to cover that shift either with PRN staff or with overtime. Uh, so that puts a lot of strain on our folks, and now having two open positions just kind of exacerbates that and makes it worse. So our guys are putting in a lot of hours right now. Another, uh, struggle is our call volume as far as staffing. Uh, there's no national standard really for EMS as far as how many ambulances you should staff or have for a community because there are a lot of factors that go into it, like what's your response time is, um, the health and of your community and what their usage rate is. Um, so we really don't have a national standard, but so far, um, our current model has essentially been that we add staff and units when we just can't handle the call volume anymore. The problem with that is it always keeps us reactionary instead of kind of looking forward. And it keeps our people overworked because they're kind of in a constant state of trying to catch up. Um, Ms. Beverly and I, um, in our str- strategic planning meetings, have talked about the need kind of to look forward into the future and have a little more strategic planning in our staffing that allows us to, um, be a little bit more proactive. As mentioned earlier, our ambulances have about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand miles when we're, they're replaced. The EMS department's always had a replacement plan where we buy one ambulance each year, but that's been for twenty-plus years and the call volume has just gotten more and more and more and more. We're to the point now where we're probably going to have to try to start looking at buying more than one ambulance per year if we're going to keep the mileage off of our units. We are looking into a grant that House Bill three thousand this year, uh, put into place that'll be administered through the Texas Comptroller's Office. Uh, we'll have to work, uh, pretty closely with Lamar County because the grant comes through them, but it's for rural ambulance service providers, uh, where they will, uh, give you a grant of up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a community our size to purchase an ambulance. Um, so we're definitely gonna look into that. Uh, I think the grant application will open after the first of the year and we'll be working closely with Lamar County. That could probably give us a little bit of relief. The problem is, is we don't know that that's going to be a recurring thing or if it's going to be a one-time thing. And then we don't know exactly who are gonna qualify for those grants. Another concern that we share with the fire department is our aging facilities. Our oldest facility being built in nineteen sixty-five. That facility was handed down to us from the fire department when a new fire and EMS facility was built on Pine Mill Road in two thousand and one. That station had not been used for staffing overnight staff, um, until recently when we added a fourth unit for nine one one and had to have a place to put that crew. Uh, we were able to remodel the sleeping quarters for mixed crew use. Um, and then we're now operating out of that station today. Uh, so we were able to make do kind of what we had there, but that facility's very old and requires a lot of maintenance. And if we were to add any more staff or units, we would essentially have no roof space to put them in. Uh, back to our mission, kind of the third part of that mission was to never yield. So although we do have some struggles right now, we're still looking forward, that's no reason for us not to take the absolute best care of our community that we can. Um, and so kind of looking ahead at our upcoming goals, ultrasound is actually already in place. Um, we have an ultrasound unit that rides on our deputy chief vehicle. Um, and it's used in cardiac arrest patients to evaluate their heart motion. Um, and that's fairly new to us and fairly new to EMS as an industry, that's kind of advanced procedure right now. Also, we're working with the dispatch at the police department to, uh, look at some EMD or, uh, emergency medical dispatch software that will hopefully help us to better filter our calls and be more efficient. It will also, uh, give them, um, the ability to give some, uh, good, um, physician-approved, uh, pre-arrival instructions, especially for like telecommunicator CPR. That's been shown to really make a difference in cardiac arrest patients if they can get good, consistent CPR instructions from telecommunications. Uh, another thing is, uh, beginning October first, we are contracting with a new provider for medical direction. In the state of Texas, you have to have a physician that oversees your, your EMS service. He writes the protocols, oversees the treatments, does a lot of training. Uh, we're going with a company called Best EMS that has multiple physicians, uh, and our physician will be Dr. Bertrand. This will allow us to kind of be even closer to the leading edge of pre-hospital care with new advanced procedures and new protocols. We have several of our staff right now that are in critical care paramedic training and flight paramedic training. Um, and then also, we are in the process of working on implementation of a pre-hospital blood products program. Uh, kind of that refrigerator, you can see in the bottom right, there is a blood refrigerator that will eventually one day ride in our, um, in our deputy chief vehicle and can be taken to deliver blood products on the scene of traumatic events. Uh, that's part of a statewide initiative, uh, to put blood in every county in the state. Um, so we're kind of on pause right there. Right now, we were working on it on our own to begin with, and now the state has come in, so we're trying to kind of see how that's gonna all fit together. So I just want to say lastly that we're extremely lucky. Um, I'm extremely lucky to live in this community with these folks that we have taking care of our community. Um, they're dedicated, they're professional, they're very good at what they do, and I'm very proud to be a part of it. Uh, if there's any questions you guys have for me, I will sure try to answer them.
I don't really have a question, but just, I want to say thank you. Over the last six months, eight months, we've had a family member that we've had to call several crews out and every time they've been professional, but more so compassionate. And that's with the elderly, a lot of times, really what we need. And we were given that every time promptly and professionally. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. They do a great job.
They do.
Anything else?
I, I'd like to, uh, say the same thing, that I appreciate what you do. Because, you know, it doesn't matter, uh, where you come from, what your racial background, socioeconomic background, age, it doesn't matter. Everyone appreciates EMS because we all need you. And, uh, Paris EMS, uh, down my thirty-year history being here in Paris, uh, they've always been prompt and, you know, knowledgeable and polite. You know, you've all done a good job and you're still doing a good job, so just hope y'all stay encouraged. And, uh, I was gonna tell Mickey that we need to be, uh, probably do a better job of praying for our EMS and all of our first responders. So I was sitting here thinking, I, I wouldn't, was not, not listening to you, I was listening, but I was thinking, as soon as I leave here, I'm going to put all of y'all on our prayer list. Just to pray for y'all.
Please do. These guys spend a lot of time away from home, taking care of other folks' families, um, so they could use all the prayers they can get.
Yep.
I'll say, uh, you know, you're, the, the challenges, right, that you had presented, you know, very, very similar to the discussions we've had in the past. And I firmly believe that we've got the, the, the right city manager that has the right, you know, forethought to say that, hey, listen, we've gotta change some things up and, and maybe get out of the monotony of maybe some of the operations we've done in the past, change things up. And so I appreciate that and I appreciate having that ability, that time for her to be able to operate and understand the challenges. Coming in new, I know that could be difficult, but I appreciate you guys giving her the opportunity to be able to tackle these head-on. Um, and for, for us as council to be able to understand the challenges that you guys see. We're not there, uh, doing that hard work that you guys do, but we appreciate you guys giving us that opportunity to be able to understand and to figure things out. You know, throughout the last few weeks, I've, I've had a good discussion with, with, uh, with some of your folks that have served, you know, out in the field, taking care of folks, taking care of our citizens. And is, one of the things that moved me, I mean, it gave me chills, was that peer-to-peer, um, program that you, that you guys have. First and foremost, I want to say I appreciate that, I think that is great. We need that in all of our departments, really. Whenever I was talking to a, a, a few of your, a few of your folks, I said, you know, it, it affects everyone, right? Every department's either overworked, overstressed, they've got personal lives, they've, they're, they're dealing with so much. But that model and your leadership in, in, in acting that within our community and within our city and maybe pushing that down the road to police and fire and, and continuing downward, even something like Public Works, IT sometimes. And I'm stressed out, I've got these hackers trying to, you know, buzz our city and it's like, man, what's going on? Like, that could be a very stressing situation, and it's all relative to, to that, to the situation. But I just want to say, I appreciate y'all's leadership in that and really trying to implement that. That was very moving and it even reminded me of, of serving on council, you know? I mean, there are times where it's like, good lord, you know, God forbid something awful were to happen. But we all as a community feel that. And so it starts with you all, but ultimately, it's a trickle down to all of our citizens.
Yes, for sure.
Which is a good model.
Uh, that was, it grew really from a grassroots effort. I mean, it was the field lever providers, a couple of them that were very passionate about it came to me, said, we think we need to do this. So we were able to get some funding through NetRec to provide the training, trained our EMS service and several others in the, in the region. And then, um, you know, they can kind of ask you some, they're, they are excited about it. And sometimes I, I'm the one saying, well, wait just a second, you know? But, uh, but they're, they're ready to, uh, help involve the police department, the fire department, uh, any other kind of departments. In fact, uh, they've, uh, secured some training through TEACs, um, in the end of October uh, to provide some training for peer support teams that's gonna be hosted here in Lamar County that Sheriff's Department, Police Department, Fire Department are all invited to, so.
Fantastic. Well, thank you again.
Thank you.
For all that you all do, we appreciate y'all. Alright, we will now move on to agenda item number fourteen. Actually, sorry, let's backtrack, thirteen, uh, discuss and act on a resolution granting Atmos an increase in revenues as recommended by, uh, the Atmos City Steering Committee. by the Atmos City Steering Committee. Mr. Anderson?
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. On April 1st, Atmos requested a rate increase that would have increased their total revenues just over $245 million. At that point, the Atmos City Steering Committee, which the city of Paris is a member of, began review the negotiation with them. And at the end of that process, they have decreased that rate increase by about $40 million. And so we are recommending that the council approve those negotiated rates that would become effective October 1st, 2025.
Counsel, I want to go ahead and ask for any questions or comments you all have. You know, $40 million.
Not pocket change.
Right, that's still quite a bit. That, that got reduced, so we appreciate the efforts that you all put into that. And it's never, it's never easy increasing. We don't like to see increases, but appreciate you fighting for a decrease somewhere along the way there. So thank you for that. If there's nothing else, I'll open the floor to, to entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve item 13.
Second. Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries, 5-0. All right, moving on to agenda item number 14. Consider and approve future events for the city council and/or city staff pursuant to Resolution Number 2004-081. Anyone have anything? Okay. I want to remind everyone that we do have a special meeting tomorrow, and a workshop following that at 5:30 PM. For the record, I will not be present for that due to a business meeting I have, but I would, if we have a quorum, I'll join via Teams. If there's nothing else, then we'll move on to agenda item number 15.
Well, I'd like to say I appreciate my friend Mickey for standing in for me on the last meeting, but I've, I've got it tonight. I'll make the motion to re-adjourn.
We got a motion?
I'll second that.
We'll second that with Mr. Ellis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries, 5-0.